Yes.
No action.
No action.
Well, wait, do that again, I'm sorry. Do it one more time.
What?
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
No action?
No action.
Oh, it wasn't on.
Thank you, question is how good.
Oh, my, I have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead and go through internal. No.
The board, board moves to agree to enter into the sub grant agreement between Portage County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Department of Jobs and Family Services, of Northeast Ohio Association, Council of Government, Ohio Means Jobs Center Operation Operator, and Adult Dislocated Worker Services.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into agreement to certify PT Recovery Support Program between Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Jobs and Family Services and Kevin Coleman Professionals, Inc.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to accept the bid and reward the contract to project number AT-12160 at water water treatment, at water wastewater treatment plan WWPTP, Clarified Improvements of Portage County Regional Sewer District.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the resolution 21-0323 to enter into an agreement between Portage County Board of Commissioners and Portage County Regional Planning Commission for Community Planning Services for Comprehensive Plan 2050.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into an agreement between Portage County Board of Commissioners and Portage County Regional Planning Commissions, Community Planning Services for Vision Plan 2050.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to set proposal date and request qualifications for consulting services oversight and compliance with American Rescue Plan Funds, Portage County Commissioners.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the specifications and set bid dates for Freedom Township ADA Project, Freedom Township, Ohio.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to clarify the necessity of purchase of a vehicle used by the Portage County Homeland Security Emergency Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into equipment lease agreement between Portage County Board of Commissioners and the CCT Finance, Portage County Prosecutor.
Is that for copiers?
Sabrina?
Do we know what that's for?
Is that about?
I.
It doesn't say.
Is that for the?
Prosecutor's office.
Yeah, that's for the.
Copier printers?
For the night vision?
No, that's, no, that's for the sheriff's part with the night vision.
Uh, prosecutor's grant?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
CCT Financial?
I'm gonna call Joanne. I'm thinking it is, only because copier leases are only sixty-three months, it's a weird contract.
Joanne, you have not gone home. Hey.
I got a couple things I have to do before.
Good. Hey, quick question for ya. Um, number nine resolution, it says that, um, equipment lease for the prosecutor's office, is that for like copiers and printers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go home. Bye.
She sounds like she needs to be a bit. She was like that yesterday, so Joanne, you're not gonna get over it, got that summer cold thing.
Okay.
Second.
Second?
Second?
Roll call.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Joe, Department of Finance? What? Anything within the resolutions, Joe?
I mean, everything pretty standard, for the easiest hundred miles in Ohio.
I have a question, okay, yeah, everything for one through five, right, is?
Correct.
Okay.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 12, 2021 bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 12, 2021 wire transfer for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the August 12, 2021 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 12, 2021, then annul certification as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 19, 2021 bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 19, 2021 wire transfer for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 19, 2021 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, August 19, 2021, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the General Fund 2021 Annual Appropriation Resolution 20-0802 adopted December 17, 2020.
Did you want to comment on that?
Um, one is for reimbursement, one is for any applied equipment that we're doing in the quarter.
Okay.
Okay.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the Non-General Fund 2021 Annual Appropriation Resolution 20-0803 adopted December 17, 2020.
Um, two of them is closeout funds, and then one of them is for SWAT equipment gear, and then the last one is for workers' compensation fund, uh, 2022.
I have a question for the federal equitable for the sheriff. What is exactly does that mean, federal equitable sheriff? Is that our share towards like a grant or something? What, what does that mean?
That, no, that is this, that's a special revenue fund.
Oh.
And it, it, it's just a name of, name of the fund.
Oh, okay.
So I don't, I don't know where the revenue is, I can find out?
Okay. That's okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Trans, Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer fund 7201 WCRRP, General Administrative Fund 7231, Pro S 2022.
Uh, Joe, I have a question on this one. I think it may be an error, under the resolve, it says that the funding transfer will be made in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, but yet it's a hundred down there.
It should be a hundred thousand.
It should be, okay, so we'll just get that correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I can.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board agrees to transfer fund 1201 Motor Vehicles Gas Tax Fund to 1210 Safety Study.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to create a fund 1022 CASA program, due in the court.
Second.
I just wanna make a comment on that. I wanna give a hats off kudos to both Judge, Judge Smith and State Rep Pabliga. They're the ones that got this put together and got the funding, so this is a great new addition for Portage County.
How long is that fund? They, they give them two or three years for that?
I thought it was, did I see? I looked at different things, so I, I'm not sure if it was four, but maybe it's not. I don't know how long it is. I know it's like, I think it's just agrees to use as a startup.
I heard from, um, from court that it's, it's gonna be reviewed or here.
Over here?
There's no, there's no end date.
Okay, so, so as they're doing. Okay, great.
Okay, that is good. Yes. All right, roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to rescind resolution 21-0561 Amendment for General Fund 2021 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 20-0802, adopted December 17, 2020.
Second. Roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to amend the General Fund 2021 Annual Appropriation Resolution 20-0802 adopted December 17, 2020.
Second. Okay, roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Harris, that you had to talk about today or anything?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we got Willis Towers right on the list. Good afternoon, or good morning, I should say, I'm rushing the day along.
I actually found a process in our company, since we haven't been in our office in seventeen months, of how to get these printed, and sent to my house to bring to you.
Wow.
Something like that.
All right.
Yeah. Shows that there are some people in that office. Okay, so, uh, thank you for having me this morning. Yeah, my name is Doug Brown, from Willis Howard Watson, who's helping working with two folks for our number here on your healthcare program. Uh, today's meeting is designed to just kind of where we are as far as how the experience is running, what our preliminary budget forecast would be for 2022, benchmarking of what the current healthcare benefits look like in relation to other government entities and service data that we have in there. And talk a little bit about how we want to proceed in the next few weeks, because as we'll talk in a moment, the experience is spiking a bit anymore, so we'll go through that. Kind of show you where that is. So, a little bit of background on page two, uh, just to kind of remind us all where we've been the last couple of years. We put the case out to bid in 2019, and it was for the 2020 startup, and we had a three-year arrangement, you typically go out to bid every three years. So, Medical Mutual prevailed on the medical and the drug, and gave you a three-year contract with guaranteed rates. Now, a guarantee, a three-year contract, it just means that they're bound to those rates for three, three years. You're not bound to them for three years, it's not a marriage, but.
Right.
Nonetheless, your, your administrative rates were flat, so your 2019 rates stayed flat in 2020, 2021, and 2022, so that was, that was a good outcome. We're also pretty excited about the increase in your prescription drug rebates, and this was in the factors of the rebates, so how much you get back on a brand name drug and a specialty drug, or manufacturer rebates that they share with you. And they have really been taking off, and so for 2020, you total of about five hundred and thirty-two thousand rebates, which was up from about two twenty-five the year before. And currently through six months of 2021, you're at three hundred and thirty-three thousand, so we suspect you're gonna be north of six hundred, so.
Wow.
Good news is, the rebates are up. Bad news is.
People take drugs.
Exactly. So, double whip sword there. But that's a good escalator to have in there, because each year of your three-year contract, you're getting about two percent greater unit factors on those rebates, so we were pretty excited about that. And going out to bid next summer, we'll be able to re-up those rebate contracts, because in that cycle, Medical Mutual would have redone their express scripts arrangement as well. So there's probably gonna be more rebates in the round, so we're pretty excited about getting the level that we got. Unfortunately, we're seeing a little bit of the spike in drugs, seeing more rebates. We also increased the specific stop loss level. This is the limit by which the county pays on an individual claim, and it had been a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
For years.
It raised to two hundred and four twenty twenty, and then we raised it up again to two twenty-five for 2021. And we'll show you, kind of revisit the 2021 decision as we go through this. Because the case had been running well for the last couple of years, you kept employee contributions that had cost the plan flat, so there were no changes in 20 or 2021. The Delta Dental is a voluntary benefit that's available to employers if they want it. So, they had gone into a three-year arrangement with you also starting in 2020. So, the rates went up 1.9% for 2020 and stayed that way for 2021. They had a rate cap of 6% for 2022, meaning it couldn't go higher than that. The good news is, they've come back with a reduction for you in 2022.
Wow. Hear that very often?
Yeah. It's nice, it's always nice to have a cap, because that means it can't go worse versus giving it away.
And if you recall, last year they gave everybody a holiday program because of the pandemic, which they didn't have to do that, so.
All right. So what is the rate gonna be for 2022 then? It says that it's offering a reduction of 5.8% for 2022, so what does that equate to?
So, oh, I don't, I don't have to.
It's about seventy-five cents worth of single point of dental.
Wow.
I've had the effect of that on my.
So those that are in dental are gonna like that.
Yeah.
Open and Roman, others that might want to consider dental could join our open enrollment. Dental's great news. Little bit of background again, plan designs, this is for historical purposes, for your.
Thank you.
Your background, these are the plan designs that you have had since 2018, and the changes that you've made highlighted in red. So, again, the experience has been pretty good, pretty steady over this period of time, so you haven't had to make many plan changes. You did make a couple of changes in 2019 to the out-of-pocket maximums. Uh, you also increased your emergency room co-pay. And you added a fourth tier prescription co-pay in 2020 of seventy-five dollars. And it's the idea that the specialty drugs are the part of prescriptions that are escalating faster than anything else.
Yeah.
So your non-specialty stuff that you get, those thirty-day supplies and so forth, they're not escalating nearly as bad as the specialties. And specialties are things that are typically injectable type drugs for, for illnesses such as multiple sclerosis, arthritis,
Oh, most serious.
Things that are big ticket items.
Some of those, some of those drugs are over fifty thousand dollars.
Cholera.
Crohn's, Crohn's is another one. So those are the ones that come in at those types of magnitudes, and those are the ones that escalate. There's, we've got a lot of rebates on that too, so.
Do we ever keep track of how many of people on our plan are on those high item?
We do, we do know.
Yeah, we do.
We do know.
That's part of what the Medical Mutual folks had that last meeting, but you can also. So this is a little bit of the background of where you have been, and we haven't had to make significant changes, which is good news. If you go to slide four, this will compare how you compare to three different benchmark categories, the government, public sector, and the Ohio, those are from the Willis Howard Watson database that we go and update every year in January for all of our clients throughout the country. And then we can categorize it by, uh, industry and by geography. So, you'll see here, we've shown in green where you're richer than any of the other benchmarks. And then we've also shown you SERB over in the far right for 2021. Your deductible continues to be a lot lower than everybody else's, which is done by design, actually. It was good news, it wasn't needed changing.
Yeah.
Last few years. Uh, this co-insurance maximum, that's really more of a Medical Mutual term. If you really want to look at it as a medical out-of-pocket, that's what we've been lining down. Which is two thousand dollars, four thousand dollars, that includes the deductible and co-pays and whatnot. That's under all of the others as well, so it's, that's the theory that if somebody's using the plan, do they pay a higher share? You haven't had to pass that one, folks. You also, though, have a separate drug out-of-pocket maximum. So while we say two thousand, four thousand's better than all of the other benchmarks, you also have a separate accumulator. That's here, the fifty-nine hundred dollar. And that's because the Affordable Care Act requires that all co-pays, co-insurance deductibles count toward an out-of-pocket limit. So in the past, prescription co-pays were always kind of considered separate and didn't count toward the medical out-of-pocket. Now there has to be a mechanism in your plan that does capture all of that and keeps it within your care limits. So a separate drug maximum was established, fifty-nine hundred dollars, but to put the two together, you're within the ACA guidelines. So you could argue that, well, part of that two thousand dollars you're looking at here doesn't include anything from the drugs, so we might not be that far off on the out-of-pocket. It's kind of hard to take that fifty-nine hundred and say, oh, you're gonna take all of it. Because somebody hitting a fifty-nine hundred out-of-pocket on the drug says, you know, even if they're a specialty user, it's seventy-five dollars.
It's a seventy.
You're not gonna get there, so.
Be hard.
Co-insurance, your plan pays ninety percent, the others pay eighty. That's kind of a speed mechanism. You know, if you've got an out-of-pocket maximum, whether you're doing ninety percent to get there or eighty percent to get there, so it's kind of, you're gonna get to the out-of-pocket maximum if you've got those types of claims. Co-pays are a little life, meaning they're better than the market. Same with urgent care. Your emergency room deductible, or co-pay is consistent with the government sector. It's a little on the lower side in Ohio. We're seeing that become a higher number for folks to, it's kind of, you wanna use the emergency room versus other avenues, fine, but you might pay a little higher share, so that might be one we look at also. Prescription drugs are fairly consistent with most of them, are a little bit more generous on the formulary and non-formulary at the bottom, although when you look over at SERB for candidates, you're right on the nose of them. And you're a little bit better than the formulary or the specialty co-pay.
What is formulary and non-formular?
That's if, when you're using express scripts as your pharmacy benefit manager, that's what Medical Mutual.
Right.
They have a list of manufactured prescription or drugs.
Name, name brand.
It's like an in-network, if you will.
Okay.
Those are the preferred ones where they have a better financial deal. If you go off of that list, you're a non-formulary.
Still a name brand, but it's a little more expensive.
And it's a little more expensive, so.
Why would you do that?
It would be probably a decision between the employee and the physician.
Sometimes people don't react to this way of saying right for the drugs.
Okay.
So that's, that's probably the biggest one.
Like, Claritin may be approved, but then Allegra works better, and it's not on the approved list. It's the same drug, does the same thing, but reacts differently.
To the extent the patient has the ability to make a decision, if it's not tied to a medical reason, then they decide that they want to pay the higher co-pay or lower.
Okay.
As part of being a better consumer, but it's a big difference there.
Right.
Twenty dollars. So at any rate, the plan has remained very competitive, so as an employer of choice, folks can then, you probably look at this and say, you're a very good health plan.
Yes.
It's been working very well. Which now brings us unfortunately to the current state of claims.
Now, this is the, when I had a question, or when there was last time, because 2020, everything tanked, everything was low, because they couldn't go into the doctor's office. And that's, my question was then, is how do we compare 2019 and 2021 as reality?
Yeah, I'll show you that in just a second. And I could, what we have done in our formula too about our forecast is how do we count for that? And I'll show you that margin, putting in for that. But we have noticed the claims have increased noticeably first six months, twenty twenty months ago. More significantly from where I was sitting was June and July. So we had originally done a forecast, using the Medical Mutual reports through June, and Susan called and said, do you need to see these weekly invoices for July?
They just skyrocketed.
They really took off. And so, we've updated our forecast to use the July claims, as, as we were able to differentiate them from the invoices. We'll get to some of the visuals of this in a moment, there were twenty-six claimants with claims over fifty thousand dollars for the first six months of 2021. These twenty-six claims represent about thirty-nine percent of all the claims. And you'll see the magnitude of our system on it. When we do our forecasts, this is a reminder of what you'll see in a moment and what we'll bring back when we have the Medical Mutual records. We blend your claims over twenty-four months, because we don't believe in over-rewarding great experience or over.
Under-rewarding.
Exactly. We try to balance it out, and it's, it's a proven underwriting actuarial approach that, you know, it may have an occasional exception, but it tends to play out pretty well.
It just worked well for us.
Yeah, it has worked well for the county.
How many people are on our plan?
We have about eight hundred and fifty employees, we have about seventeen fifty, including dependents.
So updating the claims through July, um, we're forecasting your 2022 budget number would be twelve point seven percent above, uh, what it is currently. And by budget, I'm talking about the premium equivalency rates that we establish for you that come to basis of how do you set employee contributions, where do you set COBRA rates, and so on those lines. So this would increase that by about twelve point seven percent at this point, that's using claims through July. A little bit of history on where you've been in the past, last year, we came to about four point one. 2020, there was no change, it ran well that year, and we actually had a decreased forecasted and finance suggested we do it wrong, we did. The year before that, it was four point seven. So you've had single-digit, very slight increases in relation to what the rest of the world has had the past three years. To your question about where do we look year over year, this is twelve months over twelve months. So a couple of things are happening here. First, let's start with the COVID issue first, and that is, the COVID months that people generally recognize were March, April, May, uh, twenty twenty. So, if you're looking twelve months over twelve months, as long as they were up here in the current twelve months, it made that, that year look good. Now, they have now moved down to the lower months, so you see March, April, May, those are the claim totals who are much significant, significantly lower than any other months. They are now part of the prior twelve months, so that makes the delta between twenty, current, that makes the current twelve months a little inflated over the prior twelve. So it's not necessarily exactly what your true risk is, because the timing of a lot of this is happening. But the thing that we can't ignore, this thing's caught our eyes right here, the total claims for the first six months. We've got a number of these that are over a million dollars in total, and that's after we subtract rebates and then stop loss reimbursements. To know that then July was about a million seven, was the highest one you had since I've been working, so.
Yeah, I've never seen claims be that high in that, in any period of time, for that consistent period of time. You know, five weeks, they were, all invoices were over four hundred thousand dollars.
I don't see that one.
Usually they're around two.
It's not, not there.
Oh. No, it's not.
July's not there.
These are just the invoices that I pay. My first invoice in August that I just paid this past week was over four hundred thousand.
Is there any indication on disease processes that they're talking about?
Well, I can tell you, because I do, do at the M L A, in the county as well, and there has been a spike in disease and cancer, just in this past year. Uh, it's actually scary from, from younger people, uh, that type thing. We generally have, um, maybe one or two hit the stop loss. What do we have to know?
Well, there have been some spikes. I can see, we have data of medical mismanagement yet, in July, so we don't know individually.
Right. But this past invoice, I just noticed two new people have hit the stop loss, and that's just very unusual. You know, usually we'll say, oh, you know, what are the odds that we are covered for two? What are the odds that we're going to have five? You know, so that's already increased. Cobra, for instance, you know, Cobra is the federal law that requires a stop for healthcare coverage. Well, currently, there is a provision that allows any employee who has been terminated, I guess there will, for us to provide them free healthcare coverage through the end of September. We currently have two individuals that are on that. But my entire tenure being here at Portage County, we've had probably three people on Cobra the entire time. Currently, we have ten people on Cobra.
I never knew it was good.
So even though they're paying their Cobra rates, you know, they, if they pay their two thousand dollar a month Cobra premium to us, but if they have a five thousand dollar claim, Portage County has to pick that up. So that is also an increase, because people are fearful to be without healthcare coverage. Right now, it's why they're picking up the Cobra, even though it is very expensive for them, that they are doing that versus being without healthcare coverage. So those are things that have also gone into play.
You, you will be able to reimburse for that Cobra.
The, the two individuals, we would, yes.
Yeah.
Well, we are getting reimbursed. It's historically, it's Medicare, we don't have to pay, um, it's through Medicare.
But you're saying younger people?
Younger people have been diagnosed with diseases and cancers, so, yes.
Wow. I've never heard of that.
And, um, you know, this is not a positive, but for our claims, we have had a few of our high claimants have left employment as well. They'd be there for a return.
We'll show you them in just a second. A lot of this has been medical, that we've seen this spike in, and I think they're tied a lot to the type of disease that you've been, Susan was talking about. Uh, but you also have other diseases out there that are perennials, and I'll show you that in just a minute. Uh, but I wanted to give you, this is, this is something that just concerns us, is this type of spiking right now, as you're trying to set your budget.
Right.
So, we're showing you a twelve point six seven number today. I want to see what August looks like, and see if we need to pump that a little more. I just certainly don't want to overshoot. Through six months this year, when I compare those premium equivalency numbers to what your costs have been, you're running about a hundred and four percent. You're a little bit over, uh, through June. That's six months, so spread it out over twelve. But what is this spike we're in? You know, is this spike going to come back down? It's worse. Because self-funding is one of those where you have to kind of weather the storm when you have a spike, and it tends to settle back down. But it's always hard to sit here now and say, well, it'll be fine. And you got a four hundred thousand dollar a week in August. So, this is hitting at a very inopportune time for sparring budgeting. Uh, and it does create that consideration of what do we do about the plans, or changes that we haven't had to make in the past. We're very fortunate, I think, as a group, uh, that has been fairly steady, and now we're hitting a spike. So, our planning needs to be tied here. Do we ship some claim costs? Do we talk about employee contributions, those types of things? I'll show you those slides in just a second. So I talked about those claimants that were about fifty thousand, so here are the twenty-six. And I'm trying to show you the progression of where they've been through various months. So these same twenty-six through April, were at a million five ninety-four. They increased about two hundred eighty thousand through May. That would be just for the May addition. But in June, those twenty-six people went up six hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. And we see the, we see the June total of a million three. Half of that is coming from these twenty-six bucks. Which is not to pin at all on them, because, I mean, they're still only thirty-nine percent of overall claims. But, I like to look at, where, where are these larger claimants? How big are they? And then compare them over here and in the text. For the same six-month period in 2020, you had fifteen people who were at a million five ninety-one. So that's nine hundred and five thousand dollars more in a six-month period, fifteen people versus the twenty-six. That's the nine hundred, nine hundred thousand, there's a million of them right there through those folks. Three of the folks is, Susan mentioned are off the plan.
There are a couple more that are assumed to be off the plan.
At this point, if you look at number one, through June, that's the only person that's breached your stop loss. But you set number two, number three, number four, are all running around a hundred fifty to a hundred eighty thousand dollar amount.
Uh huh.
So that's through six months. Unseemably, they might breach that point by the end of the year.
So stop loss takes them off, we don't cut them?
You don't fund anymore. They're just on the plan, but you're done for the year.
But this means the stop loss may be raised also.
Well, let's, let's go back and revisit what we, what we decided a year ago on slide eight. When we were thinking about raising, from, remember, we've gone from a hundred seventy-five to two hundred, and then we said, well, let's go to two twenty-five. Because that would save, this is last year's numbers, from the summertime. If we went from the two hundred thousand up to two twenty-five, we would save a hundred seventeen thousand dollars of higher monthly cost, cost for the coverage. You'd be taking on an extra twenty-five thousand dollars per claim, two hundred thousand to two twenty-five. So your exposure as an employer would be anybody that went from two hundred to two twenty-five, okaying everything in that gap. And you could absorb four point six nine people, get it.
And that's kind of where we're at?
And the risk seemed pretty good. And I, I don't know that we're ready to say we're going to hit it or exceed it. I think the, the July totals will be interesting after all the, the August. But it seemed like a reasonable risk at the time, that we thought, okay, go into two twenty-five, probably isn't a bad, a bad risk. And, uh, most carriers will offer you three to go there. And so you were getting nearly five, seemed like a decent price.
Well, and one of the other ways that we look at that too, is anything over that, we're just paying the claims directly versus paying the stop loss insurance. And, you know, when you think about it, how much more treatment could somebody have to incur that much more expense generally, if it's that serious?
So we'll see another, see something updated on the previous. This one was fifty thousand, let's just see July. Those Medical Mutual reports that break this kind of data out for us, are usually available the third week of the following month. So for July, we should see those next week. And then Susan and I will stay in touch as to what the week of July are and through August, to see if we're having eleven months of that match. Again, one week so far, four hundred. July did have five draws. I don't know that that, last-
July, July did have five.
Five hundred pulls, and the last one was four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars on July thirty. So, whether Medical Mutual slots any of those five in June or July, it doesn't matter, those are your claims. So I knew we had them, and then I might be double dipping one week in there perhaps, I don't know, but I'll know that when I get through July expenses. Last little piece of this assessment of what type of claim activity you've got, this is on slide nine. Oh, by the way, one thing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one thing I want to point out. Back on slide seven, the fifty thousand dollar people?
Yeah.
Seven of those individuals are repeaters the year before. So they had fifty thousand.
They have ongoing, and?
And those are the types of illnesses that Crohn's, MS, arthritis, those types of things. And those are, those are why, especially in drugs, they're expensive. But these are, these are, in some cases, drugs that aren't going to cure anybody. It's, this is a, it's a-
Pain.
Yeah. Very expensive. So some of those folks are in those types of categories, and others are, I didn't want to get lost in specific, but there are some, there are repeaters. Sorry about you, back to slide nine now. These are prescription drug claimants that are in excess of twenty thousand. Just wanted to compare 2020 to 2021. We have four more, uh, three more in 2021, but the total for those folks over twenty thousand is nine hundred twenty-three thousand, up seven oh eight a year ago.
So this, I mean, like that two twelve, seven ninety-two is one person?
One person.
Yeah. Who happens to be the same two twenty-four.
Oh.
And we're halfway through the year. And, uh, those, those, these numbers here are, are baked into the over fifty. This is not an add-on number, but they're included in there. But this is symbolic, I think, of, you know, prescription drugs in general. Is it, you think you get twenty thousand dollars in prescription drug claims, seems like a lot. It's not. And you start to see more people getting there. And, uh, there's some folks in that top tier that are going up quite a bit. So, we just thought that might be something of interest. There are eight repeaters here from twenty to twenty twenty-one. Eight people. Okay. So with all that, so, I just wanted to walk you through a little bit what our forecast looks like for 2022. Okay, the first top, the top part of this thing is taking again, two years of claims. So we're doing twenty-four months for claims through July, these twelve-month period. And then we're trending the prior period up by five percent for medical and nine percent for drug. And then weighting it three to one. So it's essentially seventy-five percent to your current, twelve months, twenty-five percent for drug. Again, that's just level out highs and lows. We really didn't have any plan changes under line B, so there's no impact on that. So the claim costs for employees stays the same under C. And then we're doing annual trend, this is inflationary trend for medical and drug. Again, five percent for medical, nine percent for drug. And you project this out, it's almost like bank interest. You take the midpoint of the experience period you're looking at, which in this case is February first, twenty-one, and then you project out to the midpoint of your forecast period, which is seven one, twenty-two. And that's seventeen months. So you take your annual number, and create seventeen months of that. So under line D, you'll see then the medical is a one point oh seven one, drug is one point one two eight. So we're inflating those claim costs by that amount, just from the line. We end up with a projected claim total under E. F becomes an incurred but not reported claim reserve. This is something that the auditors are probably booking, as far as an incurred but not reported claim total. And it's, uh, something that they would build on a reserve that they would need for someday. If you terminate a program, you'll have claims that were incurred prior termination that get paid now. So we make a slight adjustment to the IBNR each year. Then we add the COVID margins. So we get down to H, and we're loading four percent on medical and one percent on the drug. Prescriptions really didn't, and it's impacted by COVID as medical may have. So we're using a factor, but usually at Wilkes Tower, we go four to five percent. So we've got four percent here for you on the medical, one percent on the drug. That will inflate under I, your adjusted incurred claim total. At that point, we apply to cover employees, eight hundred fifty-six. So we're projecting then, claims, starting point claim under line K, uh, twelve, ten million for four thirty-one for medical, four million for drug. So it's fourteen million dollars of projected claims. We're also projecting your rebate could hit six hundred seventy thousand. Your admin is going to be flat, so we know you're paying that same amount. We took the year of two July, uh, admin totals and we analyzed them. And this is a one wild card, projected stop loss. So we're taking your July total, and we're assuming a twenty percent increase, which is, we've done this factor for you every year. We get real conservative, we overshoot. Will it hit twenty percent? May not. I don't know how far you've breached the two twenty-five at this point, and to the point you, you know, hit a million one. And number one is not losing money on this, at this point. So the question is, will they come in at twenty, or will they come in at fifteen? The market tends to be fifteen to sixteen percent on stop loss.
Increase?
Yeah. That's why you get encouraged to move it up.
Yeah.
Take a little more risk with your own. And then the core estimate we added in here for, this is the Patient Center Outcome Research Institute, along with part of Affordable Care Act. You and all other employers have to fund, it's an approved belly button charge you do annually, do in July.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's true.
And it goes into a, a kind of a think tank, national think tank, of how to do better outcome strategy for healthcare. It's not a big amount of money, but all employers are kicking into this, and quite honestly, I've kicked all the years since Obamacare, and I haven't seen anything come out of that group.
That's on the side. It's a big hit.
Vacation plan.
But it was supposed to sunset, and then they kicked it back in, so it's like, okay, well, let's see what some of the same goes. But at any rate, that projects you out to be about fifteen million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars under line, bottom of line K. Your current equivalent rates or accrual number is thirteen six, so that's where we get the twelve point six, twelve point seven type number. Again, our, the difference you'll see here is that we're going to forecast your claims on two years, Medical Mutual, we will be one. Medical Mutual comes in at a crazy high or crazy low.
Yeah.
We've worked at blending it for you for years, and it's worked well. So what would that mean then? All of that information. This is kind of a snapshot of what your current rates are, called gross premium equivalency in the top box. And you go to the middle box, is what the employee contributions are currently, and then what the net portage costs are over the range. So the top tier is your current twenty twenty-one, gross costs, employee contributions, net costs. So the current split down below is employees are paying about ten point seven percent of equivalent rates to contributions, the counties picking up eighty-nine point three. So if we took this twelve point seven-ish type increase, down on row B, you start to see the fifteen million, three hundred and forty thousand dollar number we projected. If we then took the employees up, a proportional increase of twelve point seven. This is just kind of a, what, what would this look like?
If you would check the plan exactly the same, and you just absorb the increase that Wilkes projects, that's what the cost would be now.
Then a net, first of all, the net in the right lower corner for the county, you've got a million five increase in exposure. And then the employee piece is here in the middle. So somebody who is single, under the current medical, paying seventy-eight fifty-six a month, goes up to eighty-eight fifty-five. Somebody paying two hundred and eighty dollars a month for family, goes up to three fifteen, and so on. And then per bi-weekly pay increase.
Keep in mind, we have not increased employee premiums for two years, which is amazing to me.
It absolutely is amazing.
It's because we increased the stop loss.
Well, we increased the stop loss, but then everybody has, you know, not that, you know, anything that they can help, but we haven't had that many high levels. But that is one of the things that, um, you know, we were very, very lucky to be able to keep it as, as low as we have so far. So although this looks bad, if you look over the period of time, it's really not that bad, because we could have raised it, you know, periodically.
And then we, as you recall, we do a number of these work. We'll give you a two or three of these, and what if we did a little of this, a little of that. But this was just, okay, just on this number alone, which, by the way, I'm calling preliminary only because I want to see what August looks like. This is what, this would look like. I wonder what that would do on employee, this gives you that idea. What it would do to the county gives you that idea. So, plan design alternatives, uh, what we're thinking, and we're going ahead and valued some of these differences. So, your current plan is here on the left. We've got four different variations of tweaking deductibles, out-of-pockets, co-pays. And down at the bottom, you'll see what the, what the impact is. So you'll notice a lot of them are really not even picking one percent. So we're not moving the needle an awful lot. The only one that starts to move it a little bit is that middle column, where we combine a deductible of five hundred and an out-of-pocket of twenty-five hundred. That starts to move at about a point and a half, one point six. So if we were looking to move it more, we'd have to dig deeper into these plans. But I can give you an idea of what those look like.
This just gives you an idea. If we wanted to, to change that middle row to give them one point six, you can look on the previous page and see, you know, the difference that that would make in some of the premium, as far as we're saving for Portage County.
And the beauty of a meeting like this and speaking with you folks is, if these don't go deep enough, we can, we can do more. Do you know something?
This was a call. I do know, you know, I have a lot of employees, and I've reached out to me throughout the year, that love our current plan, they're very appreciative.
Actually, they do.
They do. They're very appreciative of it. Uh, but at the same time, uh, my personal opinion is, is by raising the deductible and the maximum out-of-pocket, uh, causes the users, the people who, you know, use the plan a lot, which does cost us money, it requires them to pay a little more. And then those that don't use very often, they just like to have their insurance, because they might get a sore throat.
Exactly.
That keeps your, your co-pays at a reasonable amount where they can go to the doctor affordably. And then, you know, uh, you know, if somebody has a large out-of-pocket, they might think twice about having a surgery that may be somewhat elective, that type thing. You know, obviously, if it's life threatening, they're going to go no matter what the deductible is.
Right.
But, um, you know, it just kind of proportionately shares it all with the employee, to me.
Yeah, because, you know, and, and even raising the deductibles, it's not really-
Doesn't make them think of a-
Huge, huge increases. And even the out-of-pocket is probably more in line, you know, with everyone else, because over the past years, when our, our premiums have not raised for the employees, and everyone else was getting eight to twelve percent increases. And we were fortunate, because of our claims, and because we kept raising that stop loss gap.
Right.
That we didn't have to. So, I, I think it's almost expected, but I think it's still within reason.
It's still very, very good coverage.
Very good. I mean, I see co-pays every day.
Oh, I do too. And every new, every new employee that I've-
This is pretty low.
Every new employee that I meet with, you know, I point out the, the deductible, and you know, I ask if you have any experience with deductibles, and they're all, yes, you know. My husband's deductibles, two thousand dollars, but most people are, you know.
Between a thousand and two thousand, or five thousand.
Right.
Uh huh.
Right. So, uh, that being said, you know, people do expect better benefits when they work for government, I think, because they're public servants, and I think they feel that that is more of a perks.
Absolutely.
So, uh, you know, there are a lot of things to keep in mind and weigh. But that's why we wanted to bring you this today, just kind of give you an idea of-
To start planning just your plan, so that when we come back, we can make some decisions.
Now, I, I have a question. As far as the impact of the difference, you see down here, the actuarial values, but what does that equate to?
Uh, us.
I'm on twelve.
Yeah, that's our, that's our Wilkes Tower quadrant. Actuarial way of looking at it, we value the plan.
Yeah.
In relation to, uh, the silver plan, from the biggest to gold. And we come up with a factor of how it relates to the goal of plan of affordable care. And we come up with a factor of how it relates to the goal of plan of affordable care and the differential between one and the other is how you get your increase.
What is the goal of plan? Doesn't that increase costs on certain things or is that, is a platinum one above that?
There is a platinum one, yeah.
Because they, you end up paying a lot.
Yeah. But we try to, we try to set some barometer and say, what's our factor of that barometer? So, we can compare one over the other. And we're actually, well, I'm not, but we're, I live with actuaries. That's their, that's their tool.
So, so we were looking at, we would have to increase, um, twelve point seven percent. So, how does this impact these plan design alternatives as far as the actual cost to the employee versus we increase coverage to help offset some of that? Does it completely zero out or are we still on a give and take?
It'll still be, so for twelve point six right now, you get a one point six relief off of that, you're really good at it.
Eleven.
Yeah.
Just, uh.
It's not moving it an awful lot, but it's, it's chipping away at it. Again, with the theory being if some folks are using it, they'll pay more. The other employee that aren't.
Won't have to pay.
Might get a little bit of a break in employee contribution instead of that balance.
So, really, even change in these, we're still looking, like you said, on average of about eleven, ten and a half to eleven percent increase depending on which alternative we, now, i- is there anything factored in here as far as the, an increase again to the stop loss gap? Where does that, because, um, I see that, that renewal is due now.
Correct.
Right, basically.
So, we factored in a assumed twenty percent increase in our four days.
Okay.
At your two twenty-five level. But we'll bring you other options to consider at that point if you want to go up again. We've gone up a couple times in two years.
Yeah.
This might be a year to sit it out.
Sit it out.
That's what I would think.
Sit it out.
Since we had the top claimants that made, and the top claimants.
Yeah, and that's what I say, that's the most that I recall of having, so.
And this is one of those that once you get there, you really can't go back.
Right.
So, this might be a year when we start to see what July and August brought out, that we might sit this one out and just stay with everything, just say it's two twenty-five. But that'll be part of the renewal will come from, not a mutual of it anymore, hoping to have.
Which that goes then to Willis and he takes up the consideration.
So, the outstanding steps, next steps for us really are to get, get the stop loss renewal. The admin rules fixed. The budget forecast will do for you. The only unknown right now is what's that stop loss. Uh, we also want to get the formal claims for July and I don't, I want to see August too.
Oh, yes.
After this first invoice, we have to.
So, when do you actually, is it October, I thought it was, when's next?
No, I'd like to have it by the beginning since September possible while we're still doing.
We're usually that pretty quick.
Okay.
The only, the only variable on the renewal really is going to be that stop loss. The dental set, in fact, that came through July, you guys can actually relate at this point.
But, uh, the.
So, the dental goes down.
The dental's down, yeah, we're not worried about that.
Not that we pay a lot, but still. It, it, it is something to consider though, if medical and arts go up at least, for those that get dental, I mean, there's some.
But I think, I think personally that the employees surely have to expect there to be a little bit of an increase because we have kept it fly for the last two years, even the county has absorbed last year. You know, the county absorbed a little bit of an increase so that they're.
We've, we've been very fortunate, I mean, just knowing in the private sector what insurances have gone over the last several years. I mean, we know all good things come to us and even eleven percent compared to what other premiums are, and we still think it's.
And just so you know, the page that has the server information on there, we do participate in that, so our information is involved in that, uh, to have a report from service that you're interested, very depth and detailed with insurance, but I'll be glad to get you that.
To your point, private sector, where you've got those thousand, fifteen hundred dollar deductibles, and those, those, those rates are going up fifteen, twenty percent.
Oh, I know. I, I saw it on some awards and I, I know what they're doing, that's why I'm saying eleven percent sounds high, but not comparison to what I'm seeing elsewhere.
We'll be back about the first week of September or something like that.
But we're at least to have this moment, move it to you guys, talk about it now.
Sure. We appreciate that, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Yes, we appreciate all you guys do and helping us.
Absolutely.
Make good decisions and have great plans for our employees, because you know, we have to hear that we don't pay the bus, but a lot of people do take into consideration that the benefit plans.
You've got a good, you've got a good message.
Yeah.
For the higher.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, we'll look forward to seeing you back next month.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Take a recess, please.
Um, we're gonna recess for five minutes.
Chris, how are you?
Hi.
Hard to see in the corner.
I can see, I can hear you. No. I know I do.
You don't gotta worry about anybody coming at your back.
She lost his load. It clipped the front end of my car. I mean, um, my car is, um, you know, I'm driving, I'm fine.
Girl getting ready for her wedding.
Yeah, yeah, because here's the thing, I keep going over and over with this. And I was next to the truck. But I was like towards the back corner. If I had been right next to him. It would've gone over. It would've gone through my windows and all of that, it's like.
I was thirty-one when I got married, you know. I, I skipped the first marriage, I might scrape for the second.
But it's funny, I was looking at me.
You skipped the first marriage.
Oh, and then the, um, somehow the trucks. I just skipped all that. Oh, my gosh. They should've let me in my own car. They'd let me sit my own car, heavy, medic truck.
I wasn't sure on that one.
For my own safety, so.
See, you're getting your plans going though. I was, I got through all that. That was it.
It sprung a leak.
See, I was in here. How are you doing?
They shut down Interstate seventy-six.
What's new, I haven't, uh, was it Deerfield, kinda quiet now.
Yeah.
I tell you what, man, I like your, uh.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Um, your hall, but you guys are putting a gas station or something right there.
Hey, how are you?
On the circle right there, there'd be a big gas station, twelve gas pumps, ooh, four diesel pumps, one will be for rec ninety fuel, build secure for gasoline, no ethanol in it for boats and. Who, who is doing it? A guy that knows the one in Palm Harbor right there, Nemetslo Village right there, his name's Patel. Okay. He's got two projects going on at the same time, being, not, not, one in Deerfield and one, I forget what that one is, but exactly identical buildings and everything. Listen, I, I like that because it really out there away, there's no gas stations at all. So, and you're on, shooting up fourteen. Well, and what's even better is instead of Mahoney County and all those other Columbia and all them getting all their gas tanks, we can, so they're gonna be able to do semis there or no? Yeah. Yeah.
You say that they're gonna have, uh, gas with no ethanol?
Yeah. And a rec, we call it, he calls it rec ninety fuel, which is ninety octane, no ethanol. And that's good for like your boats and stuff over winter, right? Snowmobiles. Like when you put it over winter time, then you don't have to worry about them freezing.
They recommend it for chainsaws.
Yeah, any, any lawnmower. Two second gas with that and it doesn't go down, went right death in all gas.
Yeah, I have a rental.
Yeah, we worked a long time to get that guy to Biden. He spent every two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to find property to be able to do this. He's gonna have like two point three million dollars invested when he's done or more than that. You get that email about the sewer water grant? Yeah. I just got that last night. You guys gonna try doing that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it earlier. Well, you better read it real quick because you got till, uh, the sixteenth. Sixteenth, seventeenth, oh, yeah. Yeah, it came out, came out quick and then. Come out Tuesday and you're gonna have a turn in. The advanced knowledge is coming out. All right, we'll see you guys. See you, Dave. Good Lord, what are you doing here?
So, is that in the paper?
Yeah.
Okay, so they got my opioid settlement?
Yeah, there was one story I saw in the.
Yeah, about. No, it was about the opioid settlement?
Yes, that's right.
Um, which they're about to accept also. It's a drop in the bucket.
It is, but I mean, it's, it was never enough to cover.
Well, it's only with three of the drug companies.
Yes.
So, there's stuff that's still pending over.
Supposed settlement of a shot. Well, yeah.
Well, some are company, I think Perma is one of them that's in bankruptcy.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a legal fraud.
Well, yeah, but the thing is, when you're in bankruptcy, all of those settlements go through the court.
Yeah, but they already have, took out tons and tons.
Right. I'm, I'm not saying that they're poor, I'm just saying that they were exiled, all of that goes through the court.
But probably come.
Yep.
But the one thing that we can see.
I have it.
Yeah, I have a couple.
That's a theory.
Yeah, I don't know if you're having a church on a roll or something.
What did I? Oh, these are dishwasher. Yeah, I saw it, G three, I think he said. Did we? Does he know she's coming?
Yeah.
Eventually.
We have the sheriffs.
Like a, like a.
Um, no, it's, it's like.
It's like a stopless wine. And it's all.
I have one for later.
I just thought I'd find you, find anyone's.
We'll go ahead and read comments. Vicky, we're gonna do the miscellaneous, while we're waiting for the public comment. I'm gonna go ahead and read, um, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners approves the August fifth regular meeting minutes. Second, roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners approves the execution of the drug-free workplace, airport improvement program, sponsor certification, the execution of certification and disclosure regarding potential conflicts of interest to airport improvement program, sponsor certification, and the selection of consultants, airport improvement program sponsor certification. Documents concerning the application and grant process being pursued by the Portage County Regional Airport Board of Companies as presented by the prosecutor's office, the board further authorizes Commissioner Christian Bennett, president of the board, designs such documents on behalf of the board of commissioners.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, good job.
Yes, Tony.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of the panel disposition, or disposition, uh, report and intake report for July nineteenth, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, as presented by the chief dog word, Dave McIntyre.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes, Tony.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of the amended certificate of estimated resources dated July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, as presented by the Portage County Budget Commission.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes, Tony.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of the official certificate of estimated resources dated August second, twenty twenty-one, as presented by the Portage County Budget Commission.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Um, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners authorize the electronic filing of the Porter self-grant report to the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, the Domestic Violence Intervention Project for the Bawa Grant, two thousand and eighteen WFVA two eight two two eight for the grant period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as requested by Danyay, Ucan family and police services.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of the panel disposition report and intake report for August, um, second through the eighth, twenty twenty-one, as presented by the chief dog word, Dave McIntyre.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes, Tony.
Yes.
Okay, in accordance, I'll make a motion in accordance with Ohio Vice Code, section three two five point zero seven, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of the monthly report of proceedings and transactions for July twenty twenty-one, as presented by the Portage County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion in accordance with the Ohio Vice Code, section three two five point zero seven, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of the sheriff's reporting report for July twenty twenty-one, as presented by the Portage County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the board of commissioners acknowledge receipt of August tenth, twenty twenty-one, certificate of the county auditor that the total appropriations from each one do not exceed the official estimated resources for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, as determined by the budget commission of the Portage County, of Portage County and presented by the county auditor.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the authorize applicant, to authorize the application and accept the two thousand and nineteen Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Self Grant on behalf of the Portage County Drug Task Force Grant, number two thousand and nineteen DL LES five eight four six.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend resolution two zero dash zero eight zero eight dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty, acceptance of courses, employees dishonesty, and lawful performance of duty policy, instead of individual custody bonds for officers, employees, and appointees.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. We got one minute to spare, but come on up, Ms. Reeves.
Okay.
I happen to notice that on the agenda today, there is a general entry. The Portage County Board of Commissioners hereby approves and defers to the prosecutor's discretion concerning motions previously filed, and that may be needed to be filed in the future concerning the Ohio open meeting, that matters including motions pursuant to RC twenty-three twenty-three point fifty-one and RC twenty-three twenty-three point fifty-two. Now, we know who that is addressed to, that it, there's been one person going open meeting fact, uh, litigation here, in, in Portage County that I'm aware of. Now, we know who that is addressed to, in that it, there's been one person going to open meetings that. Litigation here in Portage County that I'm aware of. And we know what the two statutes are. One is frivolous conduct, and the other is vexations to litigator. And it's clear that the intent is the prosecutor's office wants you to defer or delegate your authority to them to make their decisions for you. And we know that that's illegal. And we also know that it's a violation of the rules of professional conduct for the prosecutor's office to ask you for such a resolution. There was a journal entry. So, you know, in, there have been other places that have tried that, delegating their authority to office of somebody else, you know. And there's case law out there, and they've found it, there was a school district, a school board out there that did that, and it ended up with three of the members being removed from office for that. Gross neglect, it's considered gross neglect. You know, we didn't, didn't vote for the prosecutor to be a commissioner. We voted for you all to be the commissioner, not the prosecutor's office. So, I'm going to strongly recommend that you do not pass that journal entry because it's going to create, if you do, where there'd be a lot of trouble.
All right, thank you. Do we have the sheriff's office out there? Is there any other public comment?
Come on in.
Mr. Pounce.
Front center.
Come in. Hi, Kaylee.
Hi.
Hello there. Okay, so, we have Portage County authorized the application for the US Department of Justice for the BJA fiscal year 2021 Edward Byer Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation on behalf of the Portage County Sheriff's Office. Is that correct? Okay, do you have any comments on that?
Basically, it's going to be used to help fund our SWAT program in acquiring some night vision equipment for each of the members. So, we're going to be on it. Enhance some of the nighttime capabilities, or night capabilities, and be safer in operation.
Is it like goggles or something like that?
Um, it's actually a monocular, so it's just, it mounts to the helmet, it swings down over your dominant eye.
Okay.
And then you still maintain some of your natural night vision.
Okay. Officer Pounce, do we currently have any of that equipment?
Um, currently, we, I think we have one. It was just an older model, it's been kind of sitting around the office going, "It's for years."
And I see there's no match required. Is that correct? Okay.
How many units is that? That $25,000?
Um, with this one, it'd be roughly five.
And then Kaylee explained, I had asked what the 3% side looks for. It's like a, a subscription for database or something. Is that correct, Kaylee? Or Stephen, if you were to.
Yeah, so what that would be used for is to become, or kind of work towards becoming diverse compliance. It's a national instant-based reporting system through the FBI.
Okay.
All the surrounding county agencies and a lot of the PDs and the surrounding counties are certified through that. So, it'd just be one more step for us to become a little bit more.
How long does it take you to get certified?
Um, that I don't have an answer to. I know we have a grant duration of the two years to work on it.
Four, you have four years to accomplish that?
I think it was four. Yeah, and Stephen, is that an ongoing expense for that database? To belong to that, or is that a one-time?
I believe it's a one-time thing.
Do you know, Kaylee?
Working on trying to get some more information on it, which none of us up here are too familiar with at this point.
What's the life expectancy of the night vision?
As long as we maintain them.
They're pretty good.
And you know, I know you don't really answer this, but just, you know, I'd like someone to get back with us about the body cams.
Sure, for sure.
Supposedly, there was a grant for that, and it just seems like it's dropped every time we talk.
I just talked to the chief yesterday about those. That there is a grant coming up that possibly do that, but it's not going to be until September or October.
Okay.
So, the grants would be better than the one that we've looked at in the past.
Oh, good.
But there's about 400,000, 450,000.
Wow.
Body cams, dash cams, and then the computer, the cloud.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not so much the equipment cost. I mean, it's costly. It's, it's you have to continually pay to store.
Storage.
The storage. That's what prevents a lot of departments from getting it because it's an ongoing expense and it's expensive. That's why I think in the past, the former sheriff did not pursue it, even though there's been multiple grants out there. A lot of the department, I just saw Ken's going to be, I think, the grant. And again, I think it's because, I think Aurora was has them, and I think they were the first, but I think they got a grant, but they were one of the first departments, I think, in Portage to get them. That was years ago. It's costly for the storage, which is ongoing.
Okay, is there a match to that grant? Do you know?
No, the one that he's talking about coming from the state.
Right.
And it's those who have never had body cams or dash cams.
Never.
Or no, they're, and they have never had it, they're eligible for it and move top of the list.
Okay, all right, okay. But then you answered my question. Thank you.
I just had this discussion yesterday afternoon.
Okay. Thank you, Officer Pounce. I will make a motion to authorize the application to the US Department of Justice for the BJA fiscal year 2021 Edward Byer Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation on behalf of the Portage County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicky? Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee, for all your help with the grants. Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Maggery.
When prosecutor, come on up.
We were going to go in.
We are going to go into.
But come on up, you can come on up. We can make the motion.
In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G3, motion to enter an executive session conference with the attorney to the public body concerning disputes involving the public body as subject to pending court actions.
Second. Okay, roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.